I will call our work session to order.
Yes.
I'm just, I'll do a review of tonight's meeting, per usual, but we don't have a lot, but we'll go through it. And we'll call roll. I'll call for any changes to the agendas or any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. All right, we'll go then go to public comment. And we do not have anyone who has signed up online, but so far this evening, we have until seven. We have Bert Key from the local BFW who would like to provide testimony on Centennial Plaza rental fees. After our public testimony, we will go to a presentation, which is what I'm always proud to do, which is suit and tie this evening. It's a oath of office and the oath for our new Sergeant. Officer Crave. Sergeant Craven, thank you, sir. Well, then go to our consent agenda, which has our Sandy City Council meeting minutes from September 20th. If there are any questions about those meeting minutes for tonight. All right, well, then go to report from Jordan Wheeler, our Sandy City manager, and then we'll conclude with our committee and council reports. With that, let's go ahead and get our work session going this evening. We have a report from our government relations firm, Hack West Communications. Welcome to Phil and Ryan. Welcome, guys. Hello.
Thank you.
Well, I know we had an exciting short session. We look forward to kind of hearing what some of the developments were. Hopefully, our state didn't get into too much trouble.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Councilmen and women for allowing us to come tonight. And I first had to say my apologies to getting you that presentation late. Just hounded me, hounded me, hounded me, and I apologize. That is completely on me. He did an amazing job. I just wanted to put that out there. That was on me getting that late to you. But if you do have that, I think what we, if it's okay with you, Mayor, we wanted to maybe start with re, kind of establishing a timeline where we're moving, where we currently are and where we're moving and how that's going to play into the 2022 session. Perhaps starting with an overview of what this interim timeline is and how it kind of just got adjusted due to this special session running way longer than they anticipated. And then how that will play into some policy bills and then ultimately how that will, like I mentioned, probably pop up in what we're going to be seeing as priority bills from committees in 2022. So if you're okay with that, um, our first slide, we have a little bit of a recap on the timeline. Ryan, did you want to just kind of capture a little bit of what happened here in September? And where we were supposed to just have a short two-day special session that kind of went a little longer?
Sure, happy to do it, Phil. Thank you. So, um, yeah, we had the special session. It was originally scheduled for just to be two days. It was going to be followed by three days of interim committee hearings. Those committee hearings ultimately were canceled and so make room for the extended negotiation. There were several maps that had been circulating and to be honest, there was, it was 20 different people. 10 different sets of races where incumbents were pitted against incumbents. Some of those were in Democratic primaries. Some of those were in general elections, pitting a Democrat incumbent against a Republican incumbent. It was almost like they forgot that the sitting legislators had to vote on the maps to approve them. Because it actually went over like a lead balloon. And so ultimately, the Republicans had, you know, denied quorum for a period of time, but they ultimately decided to come back. Because they felt, I think, the consensus was that the maps could be much more partisan, have a much more of a partisan slant to it if they did not come back. Because the way the process works, I think everyone sort of understands that if the legislature doesn't pass the maps, then it goes to the Secretary of State, which is also held by a Democrat. And so it words had gotten around that there were commitments that were made there to to adopt the legislative, you know, what they had presented originally. So what we ended up seeing though, because there was a really loaded agenda for those committee days, that all got put off. And some committees are just saying, we're going to take it up in November at our normal November days. Other ones are saying, well, maybe is it possible that I can hold a hearing, informational hearing in October sometime? And so we know that there's some discussion about that going on. So there may be, there are ideas circulating to try to buy back the time that was lost. And so we're going to see what iteration that might take, either a October interim day for some committees, or maybe an extended of, you know, four-hour hearing in November, that sort of thing. We do have a legislative or revenue forecast coming up in November, although that's not the, that's not really the important one. The important one is the one that comes in February because that's the, the one that they base the next budget off of. Did I cover what you wanted, Phil, or did you want?
I actually think that that's perfect. And just to add on a little bit there, while it's also important, we add the legislative economic and revenue forecast to our clients, clients to follow during those interims. Only because it does serve two other purposes. While it's not the big determinant of the state budget in that point, what we can glean for those interim ones is, as I imagine you guys get a lot of questions about probably, what's the state of the kicker? Also, where's lottery forecasts? Those kind of are a little bit more important in these interim revenue, revenue forecasts that the legislature gets. But as Ryan mentioned, it's really those February and June ones that are going to be really telling us where the state budget's going. So, sorry, Ryan, I didn't mean to jump in there right there, but, uh, but to his point, I think what we're going to be seeing and what we keep being told is, you know, these, as we've moved to annual sessions, that these legislative days are where you're going to start seeing a lot more of the meat and potatoes come to proposals. We were told over and over again that if you really want your concepts to be considered seriously in February, you have to have that dialogue going in the September and November legislative days. So we've been following those agendas. That's gonna, we're gonna cover that a little bit later in the presentation of what was on the docket to be discussed. But that is just why we, we constantly bring it up to you folks is because that kind of gives us a little bit of a, it shows the tea leaves of where leadership's trying to go with conversations and where committees are trying to go. So. Um.
Next slide?
Yep, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna flip the slides.
All right, so the, what redistricting, you know, they finished right on the day of the deadline. You know, most of the original collateral damage that we saw in the original maps had been addressed through the negotiating process. I think it got down to, we're still running the numbers on things and trying to figure out who all, where everybody landed. But it looks like they narrowed it to about, you know, six total people now that have been, you know, merged together. And there's some people who are going to move districts so that they can stay in their district. But for you guys.
Ryan, I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you mean to be sharing the slides right now? Or do you want us to, should we screen share those?
If I have ability, I have no problem screen sharing it. If we have ability to do that on our end.
You should be able to, yeah.
Perfect. I will just pull it up then.
Sorry about that. Sorry.
It's okay. I don't know how to work those things. So it's a good question. So why the, the portion of the redistricting update that matters to you is that you got a new representative, a new state representative, and her name is Christine Drazen. So they switched the districts around and they repositioned folks. And Christine Drazen is, for those of you who don't know, she is the minority leader. She's a Republican leader in the House and she's been on the lobby side before. She has seen how government works from being a person petitioning her government and a person who works behind the scenes. She is known to, for being a very astute political strategist. And she understands both the political game and how the chess pieces, you know, move around the board and the substance of policy. So I like Dana Williams a lot, but you really have a top-notch legislator here in Christine Drazen. Phil and I have been on the phone with her just since this because she's already out trying to figure out and learn about her new, the new portions of her district. And we offered that we could set her up with a tour of the community like you guys had done for us when we first got on board with you. And so look forward to working with you guys on that. She wants to jump right in and start learning the new district. One of the biggest parts of the new district. Yeah.
Hey, thank you for that. We have a question from Representative.
Representative.
From Counsel. I love it. From Counselor Walker. Yeah.
Hey, could you just let us know when that all takes effect as to who our new representatives are?
Yeah, Phil, do you know the technical?
It takes effect in this next election cycle. So all in 2022, all 60 members of the House are up for reelection. They will be running for their new districts. So my understanding of the process, and I, I might be a little high level in maybe the timeline there, is now that they adopted these, at these, they came in the form of the bills, the legislation. There is the, I think we're waiting around to see if people litigate, if that's going to be taken to the court from either side. If not, the Secretary of State should start to work with county clerks to start identifying the new precincts and realigning them with the district boundaries. I think that there's a, I know there's a deadline associated with that, but I don't know what that is since COVID changed redistricting to a special session, things like that. It kind of upended every timeline. So I will look into that and I will get back to you. But I know for sure that the 2020 election cycle, senators that are up for reelection and all House members are running for the new district.
Right. So my understanding is, so if there was like a special session that was called between now and the, and the next election, Anna Williams would still be our state representative. But yeah, so I know there's some litigation that's going on, but to his point, I think it's gonna happen. It'll be this next election and then moving forward, that will be our new representative, whoever is, I'm assuming it will be Representative Drazen. But whoever is representative is from House District 59, so.
We'll confirm that, but that's what makes sense to me is that the people who file in March to run for their new seat will run for the new districts. And they'll, they won't represent those new districts until they're sworn in the following year.
I would like to know if you, if you are looking up district numbers and you see that Christine Drazen doesn't match up with 51, that's because not only did you get a new House District boundary, it's a new number as well. So they flipped both. She's currently District 39. And so she's flipped to District 51 and then the city of Sandy moved over into this, the new boundaries as well. So.
Which creates different opportunities potentially in the Senate because now she's attached to the Chuck Thompson District. Whereas before she was attached to the Canover, Bill Canover District.
Yes. Were there any other questions before we move on to the next slide?
I have a question real quick, just understanding this, this map. So outside the city limits to the north, that would be going forward and as the House District 52, is that correct? Cause it's labeled 52 there.
Yes.
So as we annex in anything to the north there of that red line, that would then be in Anna's district? Yes, I did, correct?
That is correct.
So we're going to be two House Representatives split as our city grows mainly to the north and west. Cause there's also House District 48 that could go that way, too.
Okay. Yes, that is correct. They did. They use your current city boundaries for those district maps right there.
Okay. Thanks for helping clarify that.
And if it's helpful, I, I can, I will send the GIS link to everyone. It's a little cumbersome because once you open it, it doesn't automatically turn the lines on, but there's about four or five steps that allow you to do that. And you can zoom in all the way to a property address. If that's helpful, we can get that to you. All right. So then the next slide is, we wanted to talk a little bit about legislative issues. And part of this comes from some email conversation back and forth where we wanted to tackle legislative bills that have just passed that have, in our mind, maybe a, an overreach, or at least it's extending the states ma- maybe mandates into local decision-making specifically around land use and housing. And that's why you see the most, well, those five, four bills up there. And that's going to parlay into a conversation where we know that there's going to be similar legislation coming into the 2022 session. And so if it's okay, I'm going to kind of try to stay in this order because they build off of each other. The first one, as you folks are well, probably well aware of, was House Bill 2006, that, that came up very early in the session. It was about emergency shelters and effectively, just as a short recap, this is one that expanded upon legislation that was first passed in 2019. The legislature, if it's okay to give a little bit of a background, because that's how it's described and where I think we see it going here in the future, is in 2019, the legislature passed a bill that would allow for safe housing by expanding eligibility for some individuals. That it lifted two parcel limits on campgrounds to provide additional emergency shelters. But effectively, that was then amended through the first special session here in 20, or last year in 2020. That amendment then expanded it, that first bill even more. And when I say that, it, it tried to capture what was going on with COVID. They definitely started the conversation of allow interacting with local governments. Where in the, the special session, it started having language of allowing local governments to permit individuals and families into shelters that were lacking permanent housing. That got the ball rolling. From the first special session to where we are now with 2006, that language has came, come from working with local governments to the local governments cannot deny or must approve emergency shelter developments. And so this bill, and I should note that each one of those had a sunset. This bill extends that sunset again. And so effectively, what we have that is passed in the last session, this, this one we just got out of, that will all sunset in June of 2022. But those requirements include local governments having to approve emergency or emergency shelter developments under certain circumstances. It expands those definitions to include motor vehicles under shelters and specifically motor vehicles and parking lots and for overnight stays. It's like I mentioned, supposed to be expiring in 2022. The DAS requirements of this bill will be extended to 2024. But where we are seeing conversations going and it would be, we'd love to, I don't know if there's any interaction with this bill in the city of Sandy yet. But what they are asking is for the agency, specifically DAS, to report back to the legislature in time for the February session to see if those, those extensions need to be updated again. And if enough housing is being provided, if not, there are several legislative members that have said that they are of interest of trying to make this a permanent bill or a permanent measure, there's others that are just looking to extend it. And so while we're not, while the state hasn't received numbers back on how the bill's being implemented, how many unsheltered individuals have been able to access permanent shelters through this bill, they are going to be asking for those numbers. And that's going to probably pop up in a potential bill in the February session. And so I, I wanted to pop, I wanted to pause there. I know that that, that's a lot of information for one bill, but if there are any questions on that one specific? If not, I will dive into the next one. 2918 was another one that is definitely affecting local governments. This is talking about surplus of land. You're going to see in these next two bills a, a, a pattern. And this is again going to be reported back to the housing committees in both the House and the Senate for the potential development of legislation. And that will, yes. So 2918 is requiring local governments, specifically ones over 10,000, to survey their surplus real property and report that to DLCD the first of every even-numbered year. That agency is then in charge of developing a database of all of those potential lands and also developing a, a report back to the legislature of, are those lands accessible to be developed for affordable housing? So there's not in this report requirement of, are they zoned properly? Are they, are they within the comprehensive plan of the local government already to be for housing? They are just going for a universal surplus real property database. That does play into the next bill where they start talking more, that's 3155. That's where they're wanting to have reports coming back to the legislature, asking specifically if the cities can move down the pathway of, once they've identified available properties or identified that they're not probably going to meet the housing needs of their comprehensive plans to immediately make amendments. There are resources built into this bill that cities can go after, not, and I will be, that nowhere near probably the resources needed to help as local governments to update all of their plans. But it is a pretty strong-handed bill that's, that if you are not on track with meeting, you're going to be required to immediately update those plans. I think they give a timeline of, once the report is delivered to the agencies, you have one year to update your inventory and your comprehensive plans to reflect the changes needed. And so I know that that sometimes can be a, a pretty robust conversation in some communities. And so I wanted to note those because you start seeing this development of the local governments having to turn over this information to create statewide databases. And then you're starting to see the conversation play out where the legislature wants to see that database and see where it's going for housing needs. Yes.
Yeah, I, so are we talking, when you say, you know, surplus real property, is that, you know, we have parks, parkland, we have open space, trail corridors, is that considered to be, is that included in surplus real property or not?
The definition the bill gave was surplus real property owned by the local government located in the urban growth boundary that has the ability to assist the state with reasonable, affordable housing planning and development. That is the, that's a, my mind, a very broad definition. I, I would.
We're not going to give him a park to develop. Are you? No, no, we're not.
I would, I would hope that there are some administrative rules that are going to be coming out during this that kind of provide more. Yeah.
I mean, I think this is, you know, for us to report what we think is surplus. And if we have lands identified for parks and open space, that's not intended to be developed. That's.
Well, those, my argument there would be, those are already used to their purpose. It's zoned for, for that purpose. It's being used as a park. This would be land that we own that is just land banked or not, you, you know, the old city shops and things like that. But we have a future purpose for those, like the treatment plant, things like that. So I'm glad you added the definition. That was my question because my answer right now is ours middle, but you don't have surplus land. We're, we're utilizing all the property or we have plans like the community campus.
So on that, notice he said plants, right? Like, do we need to spend the next year? Maybe, maybe we don't. Maybe we have a plan identified for anything on surplus. But should we spend the next year identifying a plan for all surplus lands?
What, and to add to that, since we are working on a comprehensive plan right now, do we need to be very cautious about how we do some of the wording with some of that property?
Is an undeveloped park that hasn't been developed yet in, like Deer Point, for instance, is one. Is that surplus? Is it under that definition yet? Or because there is a plan, a parks plan, then there's the new city shops, the backside of it, which has come up as surplus in the past.
Well, I think these are all great actual policy questions for the council, actually, that are, you know, what are your plans for those, those properties? I think you have them. And then as we, you know, get ready to comply with this requirement, we submit, you know, a very, our list, which could include nothing if we don't have surplus property as defined by the council or in, you know, the plans that we have. So.
And what about zoning? If it's zoned already industrial, is that surplus for residential? I guess that'd be a question for Phil.
I can definitely look into that. I can at least reach out to the agency's legislative liaison that's working on this. I know that they are, they are trying to piece together on the front end their contract with OSU first to have the database ready. So we have a little bit of a buffer. So I can reach out and see what their thoughts are there, or at least any guidance we can receive and reply back, if that's okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. And find out what type of property that that includes. So like to Kathleen's question, you know, recognizing that, that the Oregon State Government right now is, obviously has a desire for affordable housing, you know, and making sure that, that we don't have some property that's sitting there that, that they can potentially land grab regardless of what we have earmarked for.
I mean, here's the thing, it's not that our council's saying we're against any kind of housing or whatever else. I think what we are for is dictating our own futures and controlling the destiny of our own community. Yeah, so.
I'm also thinking about lands that have been foreclosed and taken over by the county within our city limits. There's, every once in a while, I'll get a report about properties that have been foreclosed for payment of taxes. On the ownership of counties, are those lands considered as part of this inventory? I guess I would like to ask that question, too.
This is great finding out about it now so that we can testify. Otherwise, we wouldn't know about this and we wouldn't be testifying until it's too late and not have.
We're talking about it.
Well, and so if it's okay, I do also want to just tap onto 3155. We, as you just, I wrote down the questions you asked about 2918. So you, I, and I apologize, I missed the counselor who had just mentioned you're in the process of updating your comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, we are. Yep.
So a segment, and I will get this staff measure summary to you, too, so you can read it. But it does mention on 3155 that if this is for cities of a population of 10,000 to determine their buildable land supply, housing capacity of building land supply and X, is this, oh, sorry. And I thought I was going to say a different one, existing and projected housing needs. The part that's making, that I want to just make sure that if there's questions, it's the same person I'm going to be talking to on both bills. So if there's questions here I need to ask on this bill, it says the city will need to adopt housing capacity and need a needed housing analysis as part of their comprehensive plans, no later than one year after completing any analysis. So my worry is if you're going through this now, you do an analysis and all of a sudden it changes, you're now going to be forced to go right back through it again. Is that something that, any questions come up from that, that you want me to be asking our, this government liaison about, just process-wise?
Well, I have a question. We just updated our urban growth boundary, which had this study all done in it. And it was completed a couple of years ago. I mean, with COVID, it feels like.
At this point, it's about three.
Right, but it's in the process, the first time we did it, I mean, we almost spent 20 years before we did it again, right? Like, so, and that was the kind of the point. Are we now being saying we need to redo that process that took us like three years to do, four years to do?
I think our housing need analysis needs to be updated by 2025. So timing wise, I think we're, we should be okay if we're going to be updating our comprehensive plan. We're going to roll into that housing needs analysis. That's part of, I think that was House, 2003 or something that required that. That was the latest information that was provided, I think from DLCD for us, is that's our deadline is the end, by the end of 2025.
But it took us, what, a couple of years, three years to do that? Are, are we going to be getting money to hire the staff and OSU or other people to be able to help us with all these?
Did you want an answer?
Well, no. I know the answer, but I want to ask the question because I want someone like those guys to ask the, you know, our cities are concerned because how can we keep up? We don't, staff is trying to get these, these developments and go through all that and be able to see it, but then they're pressured by the state to do all this other stuff that is mandatory.
The representatives will come down.
Well, I, I think that the key for me is that we're spending all this money doing comprehensive planning. And we already have a comp plan that has lots, you know, a third of our, our residential area is already zoned for high density. Almost half of our properties are zoned for either medium or high. So we've already addressed the needs, this housing need stuff. And I assume when we redo our comp plan, we'll continue to address the need for higher density housing and things like that. But what's happening now is that we've got this stuff coming down the pike where they're kind of introducing these new. they're kind of introducing these new processes that are basically at a state level where it's superseding all our ability to do the local land use planning, even though we're being responsive to the need that they're trying to do. Um, and I guess that's the concern that I have is that we're, you know, got two, two processes going on, one local and one state mandated. Um, and there's going to be some conflicts and and based on their heavy handedness, my, you know, my tendency is if we're doing comp planning here, we need to kind of pull back, you know, we need to pull back and figure out how to, you know, jigger it so that we we don't, you know, get overrode and overridden by the the state mandates, I guess.
Well, in counselors, if it's, so if it's okay, what I'm hearing is, one, definitely, let's ask if we're already doing this. Will they accept what we've just done, just completed or in the process of doing without them saying, yeah, you did, but guess what? Go through it again. Um, so I'll definitely ask that about process and timeline. Um, I'll ask if there's resources because this is, I'm I'm assuming this isn't a free process step, especially for local governments. And um I know that there's a conversation and just taking from the comments I'm hearing that the city would probably be interested in it is that we, there, there are legislators that are getting frustrated that nobody wants to say, nobody's against making sure that there's enough housing availability or an inventory for all, all, all people. However, um when there's multiple bills and the next session comes and there's multiple bills, it's hard to know where the field goal is when the field post uh keeps going or keeps moving on you. Um, and these things take years sometimes to complete. So if it's okay, can um can I dig into visiting with some of those legislators on your behalf, too, to see if there's any movement on a potential bill that might come forth that tries to streamline all of these housing conversations?
Absolutely.
Please do.
Okay. All right. Um, and then I'm going to hit the last one here as well, because while it talks about system development charges, the angle that this bill is going is definitely towards housing. And so again, it's falling into the housing conversation. So this bill started off um very different than the way it ended. Um, this is House Bill thirty forty. Um, and effectively, the what came out in the end is that uh cities are going to have outreach done to them. I think they're going to coordinate through AOC and AOC and LOC. Both counties and cities are involved on this bill. And they they are to provide, they're going to develop a comprehensive study on system development charges. Part of that has to talk, they have to report the role of the charges and the cost drivers and sources of revenue um for development. Particularly, it all comes to uh the full range, and I'm trying to quote this so I don't get it wrong, they want the full range of factors that contribute to s- system development charges rates and how they apply to all types of market rate housing. So this is geared towards trying to pinpoint if system development charges are prohibiting housing developments, things like that. An initial report is a very initial report, not the final one, is due to the legislature by the end of this year, December thirty first, so that there can be conversations during the January legislative days. Um, but a final report is due June of next year so that um they can start making maybe policy decisions in the short session and then go after substantive changes in the sixth month session that would begin in twenty twenty three. Um, the those substantive changes, I guess I would define as an agency is going to come back and probably ask for a lot of money to do stuff. Um, and that's when the next budget cycle will be um determined. So I put this on there because it does re, it factors right into these conversations of the two previous bills where you're developing databases at a state mandate, you're asked to update plans, and now they're looking at sources of revenue that local governments uh utilize um and how it's all affecting housing inventory and costs. So.
Now, are we going to get a look at their taxes and fees and how that's affecting housing availability and costs?
I'm gonna probably guess, no, I'm sorry.
It it's kind of a side question, but you've got me thinking about it, which is, you know, my understanding is, is we're supposed to get some sort of water infrastructure planning, financing plan, you know, coming on how us different municipalities are supposed to be paying for our water infrastructure, our wastewater infrastructure and all that. I mean, where are, i- is there any update on where we are with that? Because if they're going to be looking at our SDCs and how, you know, we're going to build out our infrastructure. Yeah, I'm a little curious as to what's being done for them to help us pay for some of these things. Not have to necessarily explain for them.
I remember when that initial conversation got brought up. I have not checked in on probably a month or two on that, and I apologize, Mayor, but I do know that the conversation was put on uh a a major pause when the conversations from the ARPA or whatever stage of the federal package was that was inclusive of wasted water and water funding. And then in addition, the a new conversations about the federal infrastructure bill that's supposed to have additional um avenues of uh funding for those projects as well. That all, all the conversation of the state trying to figure this out went on pause when they thought the feds are going to come in and and take care of this. Um, and so I haven't checked in in a month or two. I know the person to talk to um at Business Oregon that was part of those conversations, so I will put that on the list to report back as well, Mayor.
You can, I think it would affect our our strategy as to how we go after funds in the next session for sure, but any, that was, I kind of digressed. Is there any questions on the system development charges and what we have to report?
Yeah, there is. Our city of Sandy is uh been kind of giving the idea, well, giving the idea, we are uh quite a bit lower than number of our uh adjacent cities with our STC charges. And I'm sure we're going to be looking at those in the future. I just almost guarantee that the government's not, the state government is not going to let us increase those if we meet or don't meet any of their deadlines. I'm sure we like to know when that decision point is going to be made so that if we have to look at our own SDC charges, make sure we don't end up getting locked into uh extremely low so that they can push their agenda of finding cheaper housing. I really want to know when that's supposed to happen so that we can have an opportunity to evaluate our own SDCs.
Oh, I would add that I think, you know, I mean, Sandy's one of the fastest growing cities in Oregon, third, fourth, whatever it is right now. So obviously, our SDCs are not crippling growth. It would, it appeared to be a better approach to, you know, provide some extra funding for, you know, payment of SDCs for, you know, ne- needed housing or for some, you know, particular um afford, you know, whatever it is they're trying to get, they, it'd be better off to, you know, supplement those kind of SDCs rather than limit SDCs completely that the cities need to pay for their infrastructure and their parks and trails.
I would say, being proactive on this, if we know that the legislative interim report a or a uh preliminary report is due to the interim legislature by the end of this year, I don't know how it will look when they reach out to you, but I don't think there's anything that prohibits the city or anyone providing additional information. We could say, here's our flat numbers, but that doesn't tell the full story. I don't think there's anything wrong of developing a one pager that says, but this is how we utilize them. This is, this is why we feel like we are at a very uh fairer, uh fair rate, uh maybe provide some suggestions. Um, if you think that there's things that could be changed that the city would be supportive of. There's nothing that's prohibiting us from doing that. Um, I would just, uh, I just want to throw that out there for consideration. Sometimes sometimes I see agencies get a a lot of mandates coming from legislation and they just check the box and they move down the list. The individual that's sitting behind the desk at the agency while they're they're doing their job and doing good work. Um, I don't think maybe it's had the uh professional background to know what questions to ask outside of what they're being mandated to. So sometimes getting a one pager that offers additional information doesn't always hurt.
The, we're, these are SDCs, so we're already required to have a methodology and a capital improvement plan, all this stuff. To me, this is just more busy work now. We have to do the state's work for them.
I agree, Jordan. I I think this feels a little alarmist, you know, as I read through what it is, it is a transparency law designed to really force you to write document, put on your website, how you do your SDCs. Um, anything beyond that is conjecture on what they're going to do with the data thereafter. So it, we maybe jumped the gun. On the other side, we've talked about adjusting our SDCs. I think it makes perfect sense to get them adjusted now there now.
Yeah. Yeah, I I'm not as confident that the state government is doing this for our benefit. I just
Oh, no, they're not doing it for
I just see them coming in and wanting to do some manipulation of our own in some format.
That's step two, right?
The best situated for it.
So this is how it's going to go. They're going to ask for this data. They're going to send it to a department, that department's going to implement it in a half assed way. They're going to get a bunch of junk back, then a whole other committee is going to look at it, decide, and I mean, this is doomed to fail to achieve what they're trying to do just because it's not set up right. They're not clear on what they want. They don't know why they want it. They didn't put it in the bill. They're not giving you directions. So I mean, it's it's going to fail. Hmm, but it'll get bogged down. It'll have to come back in a different format.
I tend to believe that they ask for data so that they can manipulate it to their means so that they can then come in and do whatever their end objective was from the very beginning.
Even if the data is really wrong.
But that happens either way. That's my point.
Oh, sure. Okay. I don't, well, I'm not.
We don't need to worry about it. Put our fees out there, get it, get it established, and then work on the coalition with other small cities and local governments to make sure nothing bad happens.
Well, Mayor, I was going to say that actually will all come together in that budget note I have on the next list there. So what you'll see is the timelines within some of those bills, and it may be actually, as we're talking through this, what I will do is send an additional slide here and put those bills timelines on there, um because it coincides with the budget note a bit. Um, that these two agencies, um, the Housing Agency and the Land Conservation Development Agency are supposed to coordinate and provide a budget note back to Ways and Means, uh not the Legislative Policy Committees on Housing, but Ways and Means about um developing legislative proposals to incorporate regional housing needs assessments for the future and planning processes. So I, if you look at the deadlines that they're supposed to follow, that all comes in partially or fully after those bill reports come in. And so we're going to keep an eye on that. Um, I have noted here to ask the government liaison to those two, three uh agencies questions, I will follow up on the budget note as well because uh nothing really new in the budget note, it just kind of brings it all together in my mind. Um, or at least their ways and means is asking them to put it all together on one document. So um, I just want to jump over because I don't want to, uh, I don't know how much time we have, uh, but the major rulemaking that's underway, I want to just note three major ones going on um that came out of, uh, they were contentious at the end of session, contentious in a previous session, but also um that they are starting to move forward. The first is the Senate Bill eight uh five eighty two that passed. This was the modernization, recycling modernization bill. Um, local governments are heavily impacted in this. Um, they, this is a monster bill. Um, it's four years of rulemaking. Um, uh, specific, or I, let me rephrase that, I apologize, four years of implementation, two rounds of rulemaking, the two rounds of rulemaking, as I noted there, are going to be broken up into those subject areas. Um, one is getting ready to start uh with some racks or rules advisory committees. Um, we are getting updates on that, but we have not uh started getting all the materials yet from the agency. But you will see there, those two rounds will run through the quarter, quarter four of this year to next year. And then after that, the second round from twenty twenty two's quarter four through twenty twenty three, quarter four will happen. And then after that, you'll start seeing implementations of the bill. Um, this has got a lot of the business and industry worked up. Um, they are starting to participate more proactively in the conversations and rulemaking. But at the end of session, this was a very contentious bill that got held up multiple times, became a uh negotiating uh bill between the both chambers. So I just wanted to note that for you. Um, it's, it it's long. Um, if you, the council would like a more summarized version of it. Um, the legislative staff measure summary, which is their goal is meant to be one page, this bill's uh staff measure summary was seven pages. So if you would like us to condense that down, I'm happy to do that, um or at least the rulemaking purpose uh process of it to help um you folks follow it if it's of of importance to you.
There are one sentence of what it is?
Um, effectively, what they're trying to do is make a statewide uh recycling list, no matter, right now, if you're in Eastern Oregon, there's things that can be recycled that uh that aren't here. Over here, there's a lot of different other places that uh different, different counties recycle different things that Eastern Oregon doesn't. They're looking, they're looking for a one statewide list. Um, they're asking for the producers of these products to help fund the cost of it and local governments to help to um provide the recycling infrastructure or uh provide that, um, yeah, infrastructure is the right word there, but be funded through the processors. So it really kind of, you saw in the negotiations, uh, business and industry pitted against local government quite a bit on this one. So um I think it, they're starting to have fruitful conversations. Uh, but I, there's a lot of the bill delegated decisions to the rulemaking process. So you're going to see the policy develop in rulemaking as well.
Does anyone take the recycling anyways yet? Anyways.
Um, the other two here are just of noteworthy as well, the greenhouse gas emission program rulemaking. That has been extended. It was supposed to be wrapped up this uh beginning of this month. Um, there has been, this has come about, um, if you remember a couple sessions ago, there was the cap and trade uh conversations that led to walkouts. Uh, that then led to governors' executive orders. This is part of the executive order um of developing a greenhouse gas emissions or also known as the Climate Protection Program. Um, they are in the process of rulemaking. They've developed an overall proposal. Um, but they're going through the uh public comment process right now. There's a lot of um requests for it to be extended. They did that by extending it almost a month or to October twenty fifth. Um, we have, we've, a lot of our other local government clients have been asking about that, so I just wanted to put it there if if it is of an interest to you. So. Um, and then the last one is just the the very large wildfire recovery and a preparedness bill that passed at the end of session. That was Senate Bill seven sixty two. This one um was one of those standard bills and uh, correct me if I'm wrong here, Ryan, where it was taking massive concepts. Um, putting it into bill form with almost zero uh clarity and just saying, agencies, it's up to you to implement it correctly through rulemaking. There was a lot of heartburn over that. Definitions of urban uh wa- uh urban wildlife, uh wildlife uh interfacing definitions, that is started. Um, the Fire Marshal's Office has started their portions, but there's about seven different agencies involved in this bill. I wanted to note this because of redistricting um the new House Representative that will be coming in, Representative Drayson. This was a top priority for her. Sandy is now probably going to be part of a district that was even more impacted by those fires, um specifically Estacada, um others that, and this has been a top priority of hers. So I didn't know, so if you see um her weighing in heavily on this bill and the rulemaking, I just thought that would be of interest for you folks to know in the back uh back of your mind. Um, because that will be, uh, she, she's very active in asking local governments where on rulemaking proposals. So. Um, and then I'm going to pass that off to Ryan, uh, where we're just going to talk a little bit about uh state budget.
Yep. So I uh just recently had a conversation with some of the folks in leadership and some of the co-chairs. And uh they did say that uh February session, it will be a good time to come in with a funding request that they still had ARPA funds left. I asked how much would be left. Um, and they said that uh they actually don't know that number yet because um so many projects got put in the queue that ultimately um or inevitably, some of them won't actually be able to uh meet all of the requirements to uh get the funding released. And so there'll be some additional funds available. And so uh we'll, we'll keep tracking it and stay on top of it when we try to get a better idea of what the pot of funds is. But um, but with Christine Drayson, you know, potentially uh maybe helping. She's a good advocate and works closely with Representative Smith and between the two of them, uh, they're very um they're closely listened to by democratic leadership in terms of what are republican priorities. Maybe we can get this flag as a gift.
Should we start our advocacy efforts on that?
I, I would start now. Um, at least uh do the inner ring conversations with your local reps. Um, start getting it on their radar. Uh, I, I have a a gut feeling, um, and this goes right into the next one uh about the ARPA funds. All of those projects got funded, um including uh the City of Sandy's wastewater treatment plant. But regardless that the legislature said this is how the funds are going to be uh allocated, the executive branch has now started its own process of reviewing projects and determining whether they are quote unquote ready. Um, we are hearing conflicting conversations between the branches of if We are hearing conflicting conversations between the branches of if one determines it not ready. Those funds will be released and become available for other projects in February. That's a hornet's nest. I, I can probably, that's easy to guess. Um, but that said, if it occurs and project funding becomes available for additional projects. I, we better get it on people's radar now because that's going to be moving fast. I believe once session opens in February. And Ryan, please correct me if I'm wrong because I'm, I mix up sessions sometimes. I think it's only one week before first chamber deadline hits. Second week, third is the second chamber deadline, and then budgets are coming together in week three of session. So there's not a lot of opportunity in session to do the advocacy as much.
Phil, so I mean, the R fourteen point seven, since this tied to a wastewater project that is very thought through, I, I, I feel good about, about it. You as well, Steve?
Yes, I think your type of projects, local government projects, I'm feeling probably a lot more comfortable about. You, you folks know the process. You've worked with DAS in the past. Right now, what I'm hearing on ARPA funds is in that readiness process that they, the, your, if you have not already, DAS shall be reaching out to you. Asking you to provide basic information that local governments are used to having timelines in place, you know, Gantt charts, things like that. But if you look at some of the funding that went to other areas, there's one in a, that went to organizations that have never received state funding before. That was back of the napkin conversations and every rep had $2 million to hand out in their district and every senator for. There's going to be projects that probably aren't ready, or maybe they decide another entity is a better recipient of those funds. So.
Phil, that's what I'm ecstatic about. I'm ecstatic about the back of napkins, folks who are about to lose it. So. With that, what should we do? Like, would it make sense for us to do another iteration of a wastewater ask? Would that be a little much since we just got funding for our wastewater? Should we pivot to a more shovel-ready project? I mean, if you're viewing this quick and fast, right? How do we slide it? And what should the approximate levels of our ask be to be quick and efficient?
Hmm, I would tell, I would advise you go shovel-ready because keep in mind, these dollars are going to still have deadlines and we're now another year past before they are past that legislation. So, but the deadline's not moving to get back to the feds. So I would say shovel-ready, probably smaller asks because they're not going to have the whole pot to pull from. But I would say shovel-ready, something that we can get on a one pager that says the who, what, when, where, why, public benefit. And just start from there. If it's a project that's gonna, I, that, yeah, I would say that. Let's start putting a one pager together of those projects. Um, range, Mayor, I, I would say prob, let's probably go for the five to 10. I think maybe a good starting place, let me pause there, is maybe let's put a list together of what projects the city does have. And maybe start prioritizing them. And if we could start seeing what those amount, request amounts are. Um, then as we start hearing more information as we get closer to session, you already have that information to pull right away. It doesn't mean we can't keep the, the project list together for the next round of asks, but at least we can pull from one or two.
If you'll revisit our timing really quick.
Yes.
What is our time?
So timeline is, uh, from now, moving forward, we have legislative days in November. That is, so that's supposed to have been the second round. That's now the first round because they canceled September. Um, they will start hearing a lot of policy conversations in November. If you want a bill, um, a physical bill saying we want this project funded at this amount. It has to be to Legislative Council. And let me scroll up here to that timeline. Um, that is November nineteenth. So we don't have to have a project funding request in bill form, but if that makes the city more comfortable. Um, you can put it in bill form. I would say the, the issue you're going to have there is this is a short session. Every member only gets two bills versus the big sessions where it's unlimited. So I would say let's put one pages together, start advocating, let's get it into a capital construction bill or a ways and means bill where we're not taking a members bill away. But that does allow us to have a little bit more flexibility on timeline. January is where they're going to really push that, Mayor. If we, if we need to start getting in the ears of those legislators by January's legislative days. Because they're going to start receiving budget requests. They're going to start having capital construction conversations. Because they'll go right into legislative days, do all of the ceremonial pop and circumstance, and they will start right out the gates February first in hearings, public hearings, work sessions. So I would say let's utilize November as getting the inner ring of your close legislators educated. January, your ways and means members need to have been visited with, and then that puts us in a position to start general advocacy in February.
Phil, is, so when we're talking about the capital construction bills and the requests, is it your sense that they're just looking at the ARPA funds? Or is there additional funds that they will be releasing for, for these other projects?
My guess is it's going to be additional lottery revenues are coming in really, really strong. And I, Ryan, if I, I know you were the one with that phone conversation. So is that a good interpretation?
Yes.
Okay, that's good because you know, the fourteen seven, and we're working with Business Oregon on that. You know, they said they need to vet it with the, the final rules and eligibility and all that, but you know, my sense is that, that's, that's, that's pretty good, pretty well locked. But for the other priorities that the council has, you know, we'll, we'll, we would benefit from, you know, the lottery funds. We're looking at campus, you know, shovel-ready. We're looking at three sixty-second, which, you know, we got concerns about escalating construction costs and things like that too. So, you know, I, for a shovel-ready project, that's already sixty percent design.
We're beautiful there.
That's a great one. Economic development, safety, it's in a district.
Save your street funds.
Yeah, love it. Yeah.
Well, and keep in mind, the other thing that we don't know yet is, in addition, if this federal bill passes. Um, I know it won't be in its current form, but there's funding at all different proposal levels, whether it's coming from the Republican proposal or the Democrat proposal in DC. That is going to be allocating additional funding to the states as well. I believe if they do that soon enough, you might start having those conversations in February as well. So at least for earmarking funds as they arrive at the state.
I think we need to be very careful about how we go forward. But the projects that we think are the most important are the ones that we keep talking about to our legislators rather than a broad front of different kinds of projects. So I, I really suggest we put up these few projects that we read already. We're talking about here, and it's our pressing forward on those.
Yeah. Well, and if it's okay, Mayor and councilors, that leads into our next, our next slide here. And I, some of these are probably, probably important to you as a substance and probably not as a local government entity, like ag overtime, not so probably much as a city entity. But I wanted to let you know, these are identified priorities. We know that the Speaker of the House and others have said, we are revisiting these. I will send you more information on House Bill two thousand and two. It did not pass. It got out of the House. It died in the Senate. The Speaker has been very vocal that we will be revisiting this. It had a lot of police reform, uh, consensus agreements between both parties. And grants programs being established, but where I wanted to go with the con, capital construction conversation was um, that, sorry about that, is that the agencies are right now adopting climate action work plans. Um, I would say as we're ha, putting our best foot forward on these projects, we have got to put in those type of comments. How is it going to affect climate, uh, climate change or resiliency? Sorry. Um, those have to be kind of the concepts that we're going for. If you look at the Connect Oregon applications even this round, they're starting to ask those questions. How is this going to affect communities of color, these projects? We have to have those as part of our talking points as well. That is just the, the context of what the legislature is looking at in funding priorities. And so if that's helpful as you're putting that list together, something to keep in the back of your mind.
Thank you for that.
Um, and that's, that I just, that is the rest of our presentation. Um, I have quite a list that we are going to ask questions or report back to you, but I just wanted to pause for any questions here at the end.
Questions? Uh, I would just say thank you for the report. Every time we meet with you guys, I think we feel better, better, more and more excited about our ongoing partnership. And, you know, we just, we feel more kind of eyes open and like we're, we're planning for things that might happen rather than on the back end. So really appreciate the work, looking forward to your next report. And then I think probably at the end of it, during our council reports, we'll have a little bit of a conversation as far as our work session. workload and stuff and prioritizing some of these projects and how we want to tackle it. So, uh, thank you very much. Really appreciate. So it's good seeing you guys, Ryan and Phil.
Hey, I did want to say one, one last thing before we get off is that we did just add, it's not in our final slide, but we'll update it for you. But we did just add a new employee. Uh, former Senator Rick Metzger, who used to represent the area, has joined our team as the Director of Legislative and Public Affairs. And so he's very familiar with your issues and really looks forward to sinking his teeth in this next session.
Uh, for those who may not know, Senator Metzger was our state senator for a long time in this area. So it's very familiar with a lot of our staff, very respected legislator in Salem by both sides of the aisles. I think that's pretty exciting to have him on our team. I don't know if he still lives. I don't think he does live. Did he ever return back up the mountain, Ryan, or?
No, he, he actually moved to Salem and just lives a couple of blocks from the Capitol now.
All right. Well, we look forward to working with Rick as well. Thank you, you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Councilor.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you, guys. All right. With that, why don't we take a quick three-minute recess and then we'll start our city council meeting. Meeting in order, please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome everyone. Um, at per usual, I'll go ahead and start with a review of tonight's Sandy City Council agenda. It's a pretty light one. I will be calling for any changes to the agenda. I'll then be going to public comment. That's the opportunity for members of the audience to provide public comment at a council. We didn't get any online signups. Is that correct, Jeff?
That's correct, Mayor. And so then we have Colonel Burt Key here, and then anybody else sign up?
No, Mayor.
All right. After public comments, we will then go to the oath of, oath of office for Sergeant Craven. We're looking forward to that. Welcome to you and your family here this evening. And we'll have our consent agenda. We have our city council meeting minutes from our September twentieth meeting. Then we will have our report from our Sandy City Manager, Jordan Wheeler, and we'll wrap up our evening festivities with our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pizza here, Counselor Smallwood.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon here, Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Exter.
Here.
Counselor Hockenson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. With that, is there any requested changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, this is our opportunity for public comment. The council welcomes your comments at this time. If you're attending here in person, we have some, received a form. Colonel Key, you're up. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, it's nice to see you in a kind of a reverse role here.
A little bit, a little bit.
And councilmen and women. My name is Bert Key. I'm the commander of the local Veterans of Foreign Wars. And Alan Anderson is my right-hand man. And my right-hand woman is my wife, Jackie. Jackie is a leader in the auxiliary for the VFW. Uh, we're here tonight to present our case for trying to be relieved of the fee for using Centennial Plaza on Veterans Day for our annual ceremony to honor our veterans. Um, I came last week upstairs to, to get an application. I was informed that it was going to cost us $200 a day. Uh, we, we only need it for an hour. Uh, and we clean it up before and afterward and, and so on. So anyway, uh, that's my case. And, but I'll entertain any, any questions about that to come up.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Can you tell us what you do at that, uh, on that day? Just tell us a little bit about what you're going to do for that hour or two or whatever you do.
Yes, well, we'll be at, buddy, you, you granted, we'll be at the Plaza. We'll have a guest speaker. We'll have the Boy Scouts bringing in the colors. Uh, we will have some chairs there for maybe elderly people like that that need that sort of assistance. Uh, we'll make some presentations and, um, uh, pretty much that's it.
Very good.
It's a real chore to try to talk all over the, the truck noise that goes by, but we seem to be able to do okay. And we also work in conjunction with the Historical Society. So if we want a mic and stuff like that, they, they set that up. Couple of members there are also our members, but it doesn't require a large amount of electricity or any of that. You know, as I look down through your application or the application, none of these things pertain to us. We don't, nobody makes any money. We don't sell anything. We don't do anything except honor our veterans.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Well, we can hold, I think, most of our conversation to our council reports. One thing I will say is, you know, is when we first saw the request and when, one thing that kind of originally hit me is I know that we, we implemented the fee because of a lot of the different activities and stuff that we were seeing at Centennial Plaza throughout the last summer. Uh, the one thing I would state that I think is, you know, as we think about maybe before we go into a conversation for our council reports is this is Veterans Day, you know, and so there is a bit of a nuance to this. I think that we should all think about and really consider. We also have men and women who served, you know, for our country and our nation. And a lot of these freedoms and rights that we talk about would not be possible without that. So uh, maybe let's, I'll, I'll plan to bring it up in my mayor's report. Of course, we can always talk about it in an earlier council report. It's probably a more appropriate time to give direction to our staff unless there's, unless there's comment now. Yeah.
Could I move that we had an agenda item to talk about Veterans Day and appropriate observance tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we go ahead and add that to the agenda or new business? Immediately following our presentation.
Somebody seconded that.
Also. Actually, I think I can add it to the agenda.
Oh, never mind.
Oh, baby. You know, I got like one, one or two of those things I can do. I'll take it. Thank you. All right. Uh, with that, let's go ahead into our presentation for the oath of office for Sergeant Craven.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just really quickly, I wanted to introduce Sam Craven. He started here, I think he'll have his twelve-year anniversary here this month. Started in two thousand and nine as a patrol officer and has served for, since then in that time as a detective as well. He's done a wonderful job. I just wanted to publicly thank him for his service and congratulate him on the next phase of his career, if you would.
All right. Well, welcome. Of course, I know this is, you know, this is my favorite thing I get to do as mayor. It's a real honor. Uh, thank you for you and your family for your service. Not enough people think family members for service as well. Thank you so much. Uh, well, please repeat after me. I, Sam Craven, do solemnly swear.
I, Sam Craven, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws therefore.
And the laws therefore.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police sergeant.
I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police sergeant.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Chief, I've signed it.
Good job.
Yeah. Next up is our consent agenda. Unless there's conversation, is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda?
I make motion to adopt our consent agenda.
Sir, a second?
Second.
So motion by Counselor Walker and a second by Counselor Sheldon to adopt our consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. New business. Not sure what we're at. Oppose, nay. Motion carries. New business. Not sure what we're at. What's the official name of it? Our Centennial Plaza Veterans Day Ceremony Conversation? And conversation. Or a motion.
So I. Let me start with conversation. Yeah, I think it's appropriate to honor veterans. I think all of us uh would, and I think, I think. But we also recognize why we created the the fee for the plaza. It's very important that we honor those fees and that we don't create one-offs. Uh, I think. So I I'm not in favor of ever giving an exception to a fee. I am, however, in favor of the city sponsoring a Veterans Day observant. Observance this particular Veterans Day. And coordinating that with other local entities including the Historical Society for their participation in the BFW and anybody else who. The city staff so feels should be involved.
Okay, there a second to the motion?
What is the motion again?
Oh, was that not a motion?
That was just my.
Yeah.
But I was actually gonna make a motion that uh at this point, and maybe in disregard to, not disregard, but contrary to what. Councilman Coleman Hopeman said is that I would like to see us waive, I make a motion that we waive the uh plaza fee for this. Veterans Day presentation.
Hi. Okay, can we table that for a minute? Yeah, I just, yeah, we can. If we can continue conversation, probably there's a motion. Let me just say, I kind of like splitting the splitting the bath water, whatever the comment is a little bit. I I like where uh Don was going with this motion, uh but I don't want to create a bunch of problems around it either. Uh, and I don't. I don't know if there are problems around it. I just, when you start naming a bunch of different organizations and stuff, I think it. It gets it into a bit of a gray area. I just think we could sponsor or uh sponsoring in partnership with the local BFW, a Veterans Day. You know, celebration at Sandy Centennial. That would be my, the only thing that I would like to add as well is to, I I I'd like your idea and I support it. I would support yours as well. Yeah. Um, uh, I just, I wouldn't want too many entities to get involved because then, you know, their one-hour event turns into an all-day event and then you've got a bunch of people who have their own agendas and I. So I I don't want to take away from what they're doing.
I I I think that's fair.
Yeah.
And I also think from a precedent perspective that we should. This is a long time. And then any future event we would. You would on its own, Mayor.
Absolutely. Yes, that's the reason why I just said that we do this time. I don't think that this is a continuing event. But I think this year's only a couple of hours and very most. It seems to me this is one of those kind of years that we have a lot of people looking at our veterans and how things have gone this past year. As well as outside our country. I think it's really important that we like some um standing for our veterans. And I guess I would stand on my motion that at least this year or this year, we waive any fees.
Let me just say, I really don't care how we do it. How do you guys want to do it?
It doesn't matter to me either.
I want to, I would love to be a sponsor of that.
Okay.
But it is, I would like to uh make sure that this happens.
As if we waive a fee, then we have established a pattern of waiving a fee.
Sure, whereas if we sponsor, we choose whatever we want to sponsor.
Well, what do you mean by sponsor?
We pick up the 200. Is David trying to talk up there? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, can I just briefly jump in here? I I think the the thing I would just advise the council is, I think along the lines of of Counselor Hockenson's idea. Uh, and that is, once you establish the fee, um, the the best approach, if you're going to consider exemptions to the fee, which you can. Uh, is having that laid out in the policy because otherwise you start getting into um at least uh. Other organizations making an argument that you're deciding who pays the fee and who doesn't, or who's entitled to a waiver and who isn't. Uh, based on 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 what they're, what they stand for, what they're saying. Uh, and I'm not saying that's what's happening here. I I, you know, I I fully support the idea of. Of why you would decide that um the uh the veterans uh would would not pay a fee. My point only is that I think if you're going to go down that route, um, where you would just waive it, that you would, you would first develop some criteria around. When the council would decide to make a waiver and when it wouldn't. Um, in lieu of that, I think an idea uh that the city essentially jointly sponsor. Um, is a, is a better approach legally. Thank you. Yeah, so why don't we sponsor until we can figure out a better path?
Well, only with that, then I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, and I I'm going to assume this doesn't apply, but I I'm going to ask the question anyways. Um, and my dad was a career Air Force, so um I appreciate. And I always celebrate uh him on Veterans Day. It's um this event that you're doing, it's, there's no political speeches or anything, right? Correct? None whatsoever. Okay, very good. I'm in with the, what's proposed.
Make a motion that the city of Sandy sponsors uh the Veterans Day uh event in conjunction with with Colonel Key has laid out.
Second. There's a motion by, I'm going to give it to Hockenson because. There's a motion by Counselor Pizza to uh sponsor the Veterans Day uh celebration event. Um, Counselor Hockenson has seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nays. Motion carries. And thank you so much for your service.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We appreciate your service.
What's the timing on it?
Eleven?
Seven o'clock, the eleventh day of the eleventh month.
I know the time, but the date, seven o'clock, all right.
I know these two guys paid attention in history, so they knew that.
We had a great teacher.
Thank you for your service, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
You didn't have him as a teacher, you missed out.
Oh, holy, holy smokes, did you ever? Um, yeah. All right, with that, uh, report from your city manager.
Uh, that was great, Council. Um, very, very solution to that. Um. So just a couple of quick things. Um, we're, we're all geared up for the second round of the gazebo program, those applications. Um, the period will open up uh next week and run through almost the end of the month. Um, and culminate with a fireworks celebration. Football game on the twenty ninth. Nothing. Uh, this October twenty ninth seems to be the day that a few things are happening, including our fireworks show. Um, this week we have the Storybook Trail, um, another kind of innovative solution to doing programs outdoors at Bluff Park up there. In the late morning, which would be great for some young families to take their kids and do a little, um, you know, activity with young readers and and uh storytime. Attendees, and I already heard there's a lot of interest in that, so hopefully the weather will hold out. Um, a light agenda tonight, which um it's good to have a break uh once in a while, and. I think that work session was a productive use of time. We got some homework to work with them on, uh, some things coming up. Uh, so it's good to hear those deadlines. Uh, coming up, uh, we have the Parks Code changes at the next meeting. Uh, that's getting worked through with the the uh Parks and Trails Advisory Board, the the planning commission, so they'll be ready for for council later this month. Um, we have a homeless task force meeting coming up next week and we'll try, if that's a productive meeting, we're ready to go, to have a work session uh right after that. So we'll be talking uh next Monday. And then uh we have some work sessions also to be scheduled for the wastewater system improvements, particularly around communication with that issue. Um, and and some of the activities coming up that Kerametrics is doing uh in regards to our proposed Sandy River discharge and some of the other alternatives they're exploring. Uh, and then we also need to schedule an update for you with the three sixty-second and Bell Street um update uh work session. Uh, in the coming months. So a few things coming up on the horizon, among other things too, but um I. For the next meeting, we have the, like I said, the Parks Code changes uh and an annexation to uh related to the three sixty-second project there on the road. So. That's it for me.
Great, thank you, Adam. Thanks. Um, I was out of town last week. It was nice, and so I don't have a lot to report, but I do have two things I'd like to follow up on. Uh, the first is in in regards to the wastewater, one of the concerns I had was to make sure that we're actually looking at alternatives that do not discharge into the Sandy River. And there's a lot of action going on around the Sandy River. I know that's just part of the process and things, but I think it's very important that we actually show some progress, Jordan. On that, those other alternatives, particularly, we got some uh emails that came in the last week that, uh, as expected, you know, don't, don't live my sanity. So I want to make sure we're looking at those and starting to get, I mean, we we added it to a contract. I just haven't seen any progress on there. The second is related to our work session and shovel-ready projects. We talked about in an earlier work session, some of our priorities. One of the things I. Am still very concerned about is freshwater. Why all of a sudden I care about water? That's not what I ran on to get in here, but it it seems to be a big part of my life now. So. Uh, I think.
Amazing what happens.
Stan ran on things, you know.
I know. So. Um, I'd like to see us uh put together, see if we could get some of that early money uh in on a one-pager to do some of that exploratory well sighting and uh filtration work. Early design work so that we could really get started on that, because I think that that Bull Run decision is going to hit us so fast. Because we're all focused on wastewater and we're going to be way behind the ball.
It was on my mind too. My only worry is, is that it may not be shovel ready enough. That's my only concern.
If we can phrase it instead of the digging and the sighting as the planning and the the engineering and the proposal part, I mean. I I don't know. I mean, in my mind, a million dollars would get us a long ways down the the road to figuring out what that's really going to take.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Carl. Uh, similar, I don't have a whole lot to uh say. I did have a chance to meet with the Bull Run CPO uh last week, a week and a half ago, I guess it was, and very interesting. Conversations with the city manager, Jordan. I I don't think I changed anybody's mind at all there, but I did hear something that was uh. Something that still is a concern for my hand. I appreciate uh Jordan saying that that's one of the things he would like to see us move forward on is the communication between us and those around us. It just seems like. Uh, there is a strong group of folks working on a negative approach to what our proposals are, and I think that without having the conversational. Plan of some kind to get out there and be in front of these folks um relatively soon, but I think as the conversations go, there was a lot of things that are happening. In the works. I'm also thinking that uh I'd like to see some of the stuff happening within our city limits too. It seems like we've got a lot of people looking from the outside in, but. Uh, this is a real supportive thing. This is a real positive thing for our citizens. Uh, they should be kind of aware of if they aren't already and that this is a really is. Strong and well-thought-through process. We have a lot of things that we could be doing, and I know that that will happen as we go along. So I'm really encouraged to hear that our common communication is. Part of the what's going to happen next. So. Uh, I don't think any of the people that I talked to had any differences. There was no real uh new items brought up. But I do like the idea of being able to talk to folks like that. So with that, I really haven't got anything else.
Thank you. Kathleen.
Um, in a similar vein, I'm kind of uh concerned that we're spending a lot of time listening to all the other voices outside of Sandy. Um, but not necessarily spending a lot of time uh reaching out to the ratepayers who are going to be paying for this. I think we're spending um a lot of time. With folks who are probably never going to be supportive of this proposal. Whereas the alternatives we're considering are, have, you know, different costs for for the ratepayers and and have have fairly significant different costs for operations and maintenance. Over the years um for the ratepayers to pay for that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's nice to consider all these other options that might make some of these other folks happy, but. Really looking at what the impacts are to the folks who are paying for it for city, for the city um in the long term is is what's important to me. And I think the um the other residents kind of working out the money for it. Um. The second thing I wanted to touch on was the Parks Code changes. I am glad to see that the proposed. Um, park code changes are going to the uh Parks and Trails Advisory Board. That hadn't happened. Um, before, so that's a really important step because I think I I I briefly talked uh. With someone today and they had, you know, they had some really good input into that, and I I think I I'm going to have, I have some questions already about that, and I want to make sure. The most important part of that is that we just adopted this fabulous, awesome plan, and I want to make sure that we make sure that it's bomb-proof. This code is bomb-proof that we can implement and get the parks and trails that we planned implemented with this code. Um, and so from that end, I'd be looking to, you know, David DuFman to make sure that this code is going to get us where we need to be. Um, I have some kind of concerns and questions because there's a lot of proposed changes, and I don't want to bring them all up at the. Meeting, so I I guess I'm just going to ask you, Jordan, to kind of, you know, let me kind of have it, have some time with you to kind of ask a bunch of the questions that I have and. And and go from there. Um, other than that, I'm I'm excited about the fireworks and um I know they're having a service, memorial service for um Les Garin. Next week.
Saturday.
Yep, that's Cedar Ridge. So that's um really nice, and uh I think that's about all I have.
Thank you, Kathleen. Rich.
I just want, want to echo really quick what Kathleen was saying about paying attention to the local residents. I I realize there's a, there's a lot of effort on the outside and that's. Going to have a huge effect, but we also got to remember that internally there's a big effect, but Kathleen did a really good job of saying that, so. Um, and then the um. Second piece is the tonight's work session really um was kind of enlightening. Um, I think there's a lot of. Uh, we all knew there's a lot of changes coming down the pipe and for whatever reason you want to believe that is, but um it, I also think at some point in the future, especially. Uh, to start kind of as a council coming together and figuring out how we want to um, how we want to, let our voices be heard as well. Um, and so I think we have to make that, kind of bump that up in our priority a lot because what's really happening is the. Our our power to control our community, what we were elected to do, is being taken away from us, and I think we really need to make that important to express. Thank you.
Right, well said, Rich. Yeah, uh, so I guess we're all going to touch on wastewater as we go through this. So, uh, uh, yeah, so Parks meeting this week and then uh Task Force, uh Homelessness Task Force next week, so not a whole lot to report on my end either. But just since it was brought up in other council reports uh real quick. I do think it is important, you know, that we talk to our ratepayers, definitely, because again, and everybody sitting up here is also a ratepayer. We will also pay those rates. However, I do one word of caution to that is that, to me, as well as an affordable project for ratepayers is also sustainability in the long term. And so when I look at places like uh Wilsonville, uh Grants Pass, who've created wetlands and they've taken that water and generated park space. You know, and wetlands and 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 things that can be naturally preserved, where that water can filter the way it was meant to. Um, but it's also sustainable, not for fifty years, but for a very, very long time. And so, so while I do, I, it is important, obviously, you know, I don't want to pay crazy bills either, but uh, but that that sustainability piece. Because I don't want that affluent water going into the Sandy River either. So if we can avoid that, that's definitely a priority for me. Um, but I also want that sustainability piece.
I'm not going to talk about wastewater. Anyway, I really enjoyed our work session today. I'm, I am super excited that uh we went in the direction we went so that we can be informed because we get a lot of that. We are quite aware of what's going on in Salem, um, and how that affects us and when we need to start lobbying for that. Feel like we've kind of grown up as a city um in that aspect of it, so I appreciate all you guys' support in uh having us go out and do that uh here earlier in the year. Um. I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about the non-grant nonprofit that we talked about, Carl and and Kathleen, this last week, we met. To award grants. I figured one of you guys.
Special services contract.
Special services contract, and so we had um. We, we met and discussed on that. Um, and um, one of the, I'll, I'll just bring it up. If it's not the right place to bring it up, then it's fine. One of the. Presentations we felt could fall under ARPA funding. Um, and if that was the case, we were going to ask the council.
Yes, keep using your minds like that.
Keep, ask the council.
Yes.
If in that particular project, if we could, it was to be the council's decision, not the three of us, and we want to make that clear. To use the, if it was, if it worked out, Tyler was going to do the research. I don't know if David talked to you yet, Tyler. If it was. Okay, from the feds or whomever, that that would work, use the ARPA fundings to fund that and then take that money and and reallocate it. okay from the feds or whomever, that that would work, use the ARPA fundings to fund that and then take that money and and reallocate it something else. Is that something that the council would be?
So I just on on my mind, ARPA has rules, general fund does not. So let's, if we can use it out of a fund that has more restrictions, that to me is always what we want to do rather than the easier to use.
I think that's consistent with the the minutes even on our.
Yeah.
Work session.
Yeah, right. We we couldn't make that decision. Obviously, we were only three of us, but we wanted to bring it back now. It sounds like there's a consensus of that. We were waiting back from Tyler. Uh, from the information to see if that would be something that could be applied more. If not, we'll move forward with um, what we had, but I just wanted to bring that to the whole council.
Um. And then, sorry, can I ask a question on that then?
Yeah.
The second part of that discussion was then we might have a second iteration a year from now, mid-year, if that money wasn't allocated. So that's we talked about that as an option as well.
So that would be up to the council what we wanted, want to do that money. As a council, I guess we could allocate that money back to the general fund. We could put it back into that same fund. We could do, we could do whatever we wanted with it at that point in time. But that would be up to whatever the council wanted to do, so.
I don't think we should decide to do that yet. No, I think we should just kind of see how this round goes and then decide if we want to do it.
I'd like to hear back when Tyler finds out whether we can use it or not, and then we can go from there.
I think it'd be a proper time to discuss.
So. Tyler, did you have anything? You look like.
Yeah, I was waiting for the right time to interject. Apologies for not uh, being in person this evening. Um, I think to answer your question, Councilor Petezel, the extent to which that particular grant application is eligible for ARPA funds is dependent upon the businesses that are actually impacted within the Sandy jurisdiction. So to just use round numbers and for ease of explanation, if sixty percent of the businesses that this uh, grant are going to help are within city limits, I think sixty percent of the funding that they're requesting would be ARPA eligible. The remaining forty percent would need to come from um, the program as it's currently outlined within the economic development budget. It's probably the safest way to manage it. Um, but we could discuss that further and and I could reach out to um, uh, BEH to confirm that assessment. But I think the the prudent way to to use those ARPA funds is just to ensure that it's still, you know, residing and and maintaining um, in our jurisdiction and not crossing that boundary into unincorporated Clatms County.
Okay, thank you. Then another one, uh, name, I bring this up. I think there was a posting on Facebook, but it had nothing to do with that. I was gonna bring it up ahead of time anyways. When you're coming off of Tenac and you're trying uh, trying to turn there, people are coming down Highway twenty six and wanting to turn left to go down Tenac Road. And we brought this up years ago and it never went anywhere. The people want to stop and turn immediately into seven eleven into that driveway, holding up traffic all the way around. And if you're sitting on this way, you can't go because now you got, we've got this crazy traffic jam. And and so how to solve that, you know, we talked about like in other places, you know, you can put a concrete thing. You can't turn left in there. If you turn right on Wolf, you can't turn left. There's a sign you're supposed to turn left right there. But in doing so, um, you you end up getting people to come there. You can't turn left. We we can now, but if you can't, the easier way to get back into there, so you aren't setting anybody off from turning into seven eleven there would be able to do the U-turn right on twenty six right there. If you go up to where you can actually turn and do a, where the road has a U-turn, you've already passed those places. But you could easily do a U-turn there and go right into seven eleven, not eliminating anyone from being able to get to that business, not a takings of any sense in that manner. But I wanted to bring that up because years ago, before even the U-turn idea, I think everyone did a U-turn there anyway. You have a, you have a real safety issue right there because people line up in the highway. And then you're stuck. If people are not and you're stuck and everyone's trying to like back up, move, it's not a great place to be. Um, so anyways, I bring it to the councils, I think we should look at that. Um, and we have other precedents where we have taken away a left turn into it like right here in Wolf right by the red shed area because the same thing is so close to an intersection.
So then I I have a question if I may. So if if we allow people to do a U-turn there, um, right now, obviously people can turn right coming up Tenac. They can turn right onto Proctor. Um, so do you eliminate that ability to make that right turn on a red? Because if you have, I would just be concerned with the U-turn there and then somebody trying to turn right at the same time, somebody not paying attention. Um, that would be my only question. Does that make sense?
No, I I I mean, I've thought about that as well.
Yeah. And I support the U-turn, but then then I just question if maybe we should take away the right.
It may be, I I think, I think the, I think it's becoming
On a red.
With more traffic going down Tenac, going to the police station, going to the businesses, everything there or left turn, I mean, sorry, that it becomes quite a.
Is that our jurisdiction or state?
Well, uh, Tenac is uh, turning on to our, our area.
Tenac's county.
Town connects county, but is a, so regardless of where it is, I'd like to have the investigation done to see what.
Honestly, I it it gets me thinking. I I'd like to do another work session with ODOT. I mean, there's a series of things that I'd like to get updates on from our pedestrian, you know, sidewalk improvement deal that we've done, that, you know, bringing up concerns like this to we have our bypass study coming to a fruition. We just took over the stretch of two, and we have a light securitization. I just feel like there's a variety of issues. You know, that we could tackle in a work session type setting together. Uh, that'd be really helpful. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
So no, 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 that, so anyways, I just bring it up. I see a huge safety issue there. And I think the only way to would be to solve it would be to put a uh, concrete things, you know, whatever. But anyways, I'll let staff, they're the professionals um, bring back advice if that's okay for the council.
Agreed.
On that. Um, and then uh, Wednesday, we have uh, the Economic Development Committee. Um, and we're having a presentation um, on just um, developing a master plan, you know, what it will take to develop a master plan to help educate the the members of the of the committee on that. And that's all I think.
Great. Um, all right, for my report, just uh, the work session on the ARPA funds that we talked about. Uh, I'd like to get that kind of on the calendar sooner than later. Um, and how how far away do we think we would be from staff being able to put together kind of a, you know, uh, items of things for discussion for us to talk about prioritizing. Like a shovel ready project. And I know you guys would want to probably brainstorm that, have a conversation of the status of different projects, what you'd want to put in front of us.
Yeah, we're trying to back into that data when we're going to try to submit these one pagers that November, you know, before the holidays, whatever. Yeah, I mean, November first meeting.
Yeah.
Probably.
I think we all look forward to it.
Yeah, and I, we were talking, you know, we have this whole conversation we get to do with ARPA to on, you know, just this grant fund, but the other priorities the council was talking about in terms of um, Sandy that expansion and some of those other Walmart projects. So uh, we do still have that on the docket to come back and then we can do that the same night. Cool.
Um, all right, I recently went on a ride along uh, with Sandy Police. A couple of things that kind of conversations that that spurred with Jordan and I, that I think will be going to our homeless um, I committee on is one is is like the RVs, you know, um, having a line item of some sort of funding plan to get rid of these RVs. The big problem with these zombie RVs, it's the scrapping of them and who has to pay for it. Uh, it's not fun, right? That 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 we have to pay for it. Like, what's less fun is zombie RVs and and visually empty uh, by a city member starting to want fire in their power lines and everything else. It costs generally about three thousand dollars to do uh, to scrap one. We get about six a year. We're not talking about a crazy line item in our budget. Uh, something that's become a pretty big hot item. I know Jordan's reaching out to aggression police and others to kind of talk about our best process. Did you want to expand on that?
I just, you summarized it pretty well. Yeah, a couple thousand dollars, two, three thousand dollars to tow these and get them scrapped. Um, yeah, the police, you know, they're not super common yet, but it would be nice to have something in the budget when these things, these things come up. When you get you know, complaint, we investigate, we mark them as abandoned or derelict, can't reach the owners and things like that. We got to, you know, we want to tow them off or public right away. Um, and you know, so we don't, we don't have a budget number or we don't have a a number in our budget for those things. We do have an existing contract. It's much cheaper to tow abandoned cars than trucks than it is RVs and trailers, as you can imagine. Um, and there's places to take them that are are more nearby that and where we have to take an RV. Um, one of the ideas back to the ARPA fund, sorry, one of the ideas that I I mentioned to the mayor is that probably the most flexible thing you can do with the ARPA funds is do the revenue loss replacement in the general fund. Because that money just goes straight back into the general fund that can be used by any of those general fund departments for whatever purpose. It can be moved between different departments. So if you're looking for mon- more money per se, public safety or police or these kinds of things. We use the other funds to then, you know, replace the lost revenue from citations and other general revenues. And now you have, you know, more general fund money going into those general fund departments. So one of the ideas, you know, that's very flexible, the most flexible thing you probably can do with our votes, you know, replacing your general revenue of the general fund. Um, so we're looking for more funding, say for homeless, you know, services, which is an ARPA eligible expense. And things like the towing of derelict vehicles, uh, that would be one possible source.
Has there been a budget like that's been figured out of how much like overtime or extra expense specifically that's been used due to COVID? Has, was there a tracking system in place to to kind of designate the two?
We did during care, the care is that because we had to. Um, I don't think we, we could try to go back and look at those records. Um, might be harder to put a number on just um, you know, i- if you're looking at one department in particular, yes, if you look at like transit or library or things like that, when they're filling in for other COVID related, you know, uh, activities that were giving meals on wheels and stuff like that. Um, if you're talking about police, I'll have to check it to see if they, if it's added any other requirements or time, things like that. Overtime wise, it's just the broader staff is a big one.
Uh, but the one thing.
And Jordan, one, one quick thing too, just if I may, the the if I recall, the ARPA Act has a pretty generous um, formula uh, when uh, for for cities to calculate what that lost revenue is. Um, a lot of our clients have found that um, as Jordan said, that's the route they're going because it frees up, uh, fairly easily frees up money um, for a lot of the things that you're talking about that uh, either maybe on the line with ARPA or, you know, wouldn't otherwise be allowed.
And just say, I was incredibly impressed. If if you have time to, everyone should look at signing up and doing a ride along like this. Um, you know, you you come across that kind of, you know, what's going on a little bit with some of our homeless population and just the outstanding work that our officers are doing, the report that they're building and the resources that they're trying to plug them into. Um, you know, and you just get a sense of kind of what's happening out there a little bit. Um, so yeah, it just a great experience. Um, thank you to our officers for what they do and and the things that they notice that a lot of us don't notice as we're kind of driving around town. And uh, it was just an incredible experience. Uh, on the homeless issue, you know, Ria had did reach out. I talked to Jordan about Sandy Family Restaurant. We're they're in that area. We're around the library. We're we're continuing to kind of have an issue with an individual utilizing the library services after hours. Um, and we're looking to um, to do some things there to help prevent some of that. Uh, but it would be nice if someone from our staff would reach out to Ria to have that conversation. I know she's starting to get a little bit more frustrated with not just that, but some of the homelessness in that general, general area with the interactions. Um, I'll I'll go to wastewater. Uh, I was traveling the state and I I was driving, went to Redmond and I happened, I wanted to go talk to George Endicott, the mayor of Redmond. And he said, oh, you gotta come. Tonight we're doing uh, we're big ribbon cutting our phase one of our wetlands wastewater plant. So we should kind of link in and what they're doing. I didn't go. I know, I know, I had had too much going on, but they're very excited about it. But there's more and more precedents to kind of what you're talking about, Lori, that we're excited about it. Um, lots of good stuff there. Uh, redistricting, uh, yeah, it changes our strategy a little bit. We're back to being fully Republican again. Um, in our registration and I, you know, we were kind of, it was kind of nice there in some ways for a couple of years to be able to work with both parties and have some leverage there depending on what party was in power and in control. I think Representative Drazen's an outstanding representative who'll be great to work with. Um, I I think that Pac West is right. It'd be great to get both Representative Drazen and uh, and Senator Thompson and Senator Walker for that matter. Uh, you know, do kind of a city facilities tour, but it would be neat to do kind of a work session as we get a little, maybe it's after our ARPA kind of conversation, we get a little more dialed in and what our strategy is going to be and and kind of link in with those folks. But I think that's a great opportunity for.
I think it would be good to also invite Anna there too, to have like a handoff and then you can show her as well and she.
We could.
And you get three people to.
That'd be outstanding. We could certainly do the outreach.
If she has the time.
Yeah, she has the time. That'd be great. And it'd be, quite honestly, it'd be nice to thank Anna for some of the stuff that she's done as a representative of Sandy. Uh, thank you to staff for uh, putting together the fireworks. I've seen it online in conversation. People are really excited. All my family's excited about want a football game that night. It'll be a cool community event. All right. I want you guys to all pay attention to us. I want staff pay attention to us too. So uh, we just got our estimates back on uh, for census, right? These are big numbers. Okay. So it, now do you guys understand between the census years, we use Portland State University to be able to do the projec- that does the projections. And this is how our money's, guys, this is how our money is allocated to to our different areas. Now somehow Portland projected their growth increase. They over projected Portland's growth increase, right? Portland's estimate was a thirteen point nine percent growth. All that, the actual reality, only eleven point eight percent growth.
I'd be curious what it is.
Now Sandy, you've seen it. Portland State's estimate was twenty one point seven percent growth. Our actual growth is thirty one point eight percent. I want to wear money is. I want to wear money for the last ten years is, and we continue to rely on Portland State University to be doing these census numbers and to be divvying these out. I don't know if we've ever been on the right side of these numbers. I know I've been around folks that have been on council for a while. And I keep hearing, you know, that we're we're always getting underestimated on our different staff. I I would like, and maybe we bring it up at a future meeting, I don't need answers here. But it would be interesting to have our staff do a little bit of research on exactly how we have been projected in other years compared to other communities, how they're being projected. And I'd like to, I'd like to figure out roughly how much money we've lost. I I and I'm serious here. Uh, we lose a tremendous amount of money over the course of a decade. And you think about how much we have grown compared to what Portland State was projecting us at. And why do we do it this way? Um, and we probably shouldn't be, we're not big enough to be the only city to really stand up and and change the the dialogue on it. But it is stuff I'd like to be empowered to bring up at C four, you know, it is stuff that I'd like to talk to other communities about because I don't think that, you know, this is a Sandy only problem.
And I don't dis- I don't disagree with you on that.
Yeah.
But my understanding and David may be able to chime in on this is, is it the state legislation has commissioned this, the state of, or you know, the state of the state of Portland.
Yeah.
Missioned the state of Portland. Um, sorry about that. Um, anyway, to do that, right? Is that, is that, I mean, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
But it's coming from the state legislation who's told that Portland State to do that. And that's who you have to use. Is that correct, David?
Yeah.
For the numbers?
Yeah, for 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 planning purposes, that's correct. You rely on uh, the uh, well, you can do your own. It's a it increasingly a very laborious process, but basically you're right that it's reliance on the Portland State numbers.
But for the entire state.
Sure.
And then we look, anyway.
It's. Yeah, and for population projection going forward. I guess I, what I'm saying is I'm I'm giving kind of a heads up that we're, I'm continuing to dive into this. And it's going to be very interesting to see kind of how the smaller communities like Sandy Fair versus those of Salem, Portland and Eugene and Portland and some of the larger urban communities. And because to your point, and and I know it's just to get around, but we just started off our meeting talking about our advocacy efforts. If 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 communities like ours are not getting the right amount of resources that are due to our taxpayers, those are our taxpayer, this is how we allocate our taxpayer money. This is our money that we're not getting. Um, I don't, I don't, I think we should step up and maybe say something about. So just kind of.
See if we're doing building permits, that, you know, that kind of, you assume so many people for building permit, you know, apartments, this, that, the other. It's not that hard to kind of take that data that's already existing and get the right number.
One would think, yeah. So anyways, that's my report uh, for today. Thank you, everybody. I thought it was great on Pac West. Um, I, what a great move we did on that. And um, yeah, thank you, everybody.